Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning thanking you for the brisk change of weather here in Cameron County. We do however need more rain, so rather than a quarter of an inch, let's get a quarter of a yard for this coming weekend. We need the rain desperately. Lord, we pray this morning for early voting and for Election Day, March 7th, which is just two weeks away, but we need to have a record turnout of vote for fairness and for what's right. So Lord, we just ask you to guard and guide this election and put your people back in. Lord, we pray for Charo Days, for Mr. Amigo Association, for Mr. Amigo personally, all his family. They're visiting here in Brownsville. We thank you for the projected weather up until Saturday being warm and delightful as South Texas weather is. So we thank you in advance. We ask you to guard the agenda today and guide our commissioners and our county judge in everything they do and everything they say. In Jesus' name, amen.
And we'd like to pray for rain, but during the night, so the people won't have an excuse not to come out and vote.
Not on Saturday night.
After midnight.
I pledge the allegiance flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was looking down at the calculator.
Judge, we're doing the block red, so I thought you might want to be sort of calculating.
It's pretty well decided.
No, 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 it's alright. Too late now.
Let's turn the cameras off anyway.
He always go see me before. Then I said, "You're late, huh?"
You didn't come?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Your good friend Ramona Garcia, your pal Ramona Garcia, who's in my office.
Really?
Yeah. Okay, is there anybody that signed up for public comments? Alright, well let me get to the portion of the agenda that I most like when I have an opportunity, when we have the opportunity to recognize some good people in our community. And it's item number two, presentation of a resolution recognizing Mr. and Mrs. Juan and Connie Salinas Salas for their many years of service to the community. And I thought, I said Salinas, because I've seen that commercial of the guy's rent for county judge.
J.D.
J.D. Golly, those guys have money over there, man.
Every five minutes, there's a commercial.
Every five minutes?
See, that's why we should get a raise.
So you can be on TV?
We can be on TV. Since I'm very fortunate.
Go to jail, go to TV.
You know, I have been involved in different forms of politics, whether it's organized politics, where you're running as a candidate, or, you know, marching with the farmworkers in Washington DC and working for, working on efforts to improve the conditions of migrant farmworkers all over the country. And we fought a lot of battles over the years, both in the normal political process and in the, in the political process that sometimes is a little bit more controversial, because we saw wrongs that we thought needed to be righted. And a lot of these battles have been difficult battles, and a lot of them have been easier battles. Running for public office, even though it's a hard thing we've all been through, is a difficult thing, but it's much easier today than what it was when we first started getting involved in politics as a community, you know, 30, 40 years ago. And, and there's certain people in our lifetime that laid the groundwork to make it easier for all of us to do this. Last week, we, I think it was last week, we remembered the life of Corina Scott King and all the things that she did with her husband during the civil rights movement to make it to where today, you know, people who are African-Americans and Hispanic-Americans have an easier time of getting into college, have an easier time of representing their community as an elected official, have an easier time in getting jobs, and so on and so forth. And, and all those things that we have today to, that make our life easier than what it was many years ago, happened because there was people who laid the groundwork, who cut the vereda and made it easier for us to get where we're at today. And, and so when we have an opportunity to honor some of those good people who have sacrificed early on, when it wasn't popular to do it, when it wasn't something that was involved, but rather it was a difficult fight to engage in, and a lot of times you were ostracized, and you lost your friends, and sometimes you lost your jobs, and sometimes you lost your home, because people were just, you know, very angry about people upsetting what was normal in those days. And so, you know, those people, I believe, are the reason why we are here today and why we can say that our community has grown strong and is better and leaves a bright future for, for our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren. So I thought it was appropriate for us to honor two such individuals who, over the years, in probably a very difficult part of the country, gave of themselves, worked hard, fought the good fight for our community and the community where they live. And because of their efforts and the efforts of many other people that were with them, we're so much the better off today. So I would ask Mr. and Mrs. Salas to come up and let me read this resolution here. Consideration and adoption of a resolution recognizing Mr. and Mrs. Juan Salas for their many years of service to the community, whereas both Mr. and Mrs. Juan Salas have a deep and longstanding association with Cameron County and South Texas, and whereas Ms. Salas known to her many friends as Connie, competed for education at Texas South Most College before moving to Chicago, Illinois, with her husband, and whereas while living in Chicago, Mr. and Mrs. Salas were active participants in the community, serving on government and community boards, fulfilling important goals in Mexican-American organizations, and pursuing careers in public service, and whereas after retiring, Mr. and Mrs. Salas returned to Cameron County, and we are so thankful that they did, where they have continued their outstanding service to the community, participating in such worthwhile endeavors as the Harlingen Proud, the Downtown Jubilee, and the San Manito International Good Neighbor Commission, and whereas Mr. and Mrs. Salas' strong personal character, extensive community involvement, and commitment to helping others lead, to help others lead, has led to international recognition in the form of a, how do you pronounce that?
Audi-.
Audi-. Award presented to Mrs. Salas, which is the highest honor bestowed by the government of Mexico on a foreign citizen, and whereas both Mr. and Mrs. Salas are also noteworthy for their outstanding patriotism, which is reflected in their commitment to the Democratic Party and their extensive efforts to encourage voting, and whereas as an adjunct to their service in the Democratic Party, where Mrs. Salas is precinct chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Salas are known to their friends and relations for their strong family values and religious devotion, which includes their marriage of 47 years, and their membership at Sacred Heart Church, and Mrs. Salas' participation in the Catholic Daughters, and whereas Cameron County Commissioners' Court wishes to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Salas for their outstanding community service, now therefore be it resolved that the Cameron County Commissioners' Court hereby recognize Mr. and Mrs. Juan Salas for their outstanding community service approved unanimously on the 7th day of February 2000.
[applause]
[inaudible]
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 Ana Bocchachino Hosa, distinguished members, commissioners. My, my husband and I are honored and deeply moved. We are humbled for this recognition. We know more than a reflection of what you all represent to us too. I know we started probably many, many years before you did, but let me just say, it wasn't easy. All the struggles that we fought in that big city, Chicago, but now we're so proud that after 43 years living there, we were able and we thank God for coming back. And to meet such people, so wonderful people, they had so much dedicated their time, each and every one of you, and I will say, my good friend, I consider her my, our good friend, a role model to Commissioner Tamayo, and you too, honorable Judge Nogosa. We want to pursue what we did over there, and by all means, we want to thank you for this honor. We have received many, many other awards as we came back. Two years ago, we were also called back to receive one from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Bar Association, because they remember what we did over there, and that made us proud. But this to us, we can say means much more, because it comes from the valley that we so much love, and that's the reason. We did not want to go back to LA where my two children are. We wanted to come back to Harlingen, Texas, and we wanted to work for our community the last few years that we have left. We hope to struggle and do the same things as we did over there for our people, for the good of our community, for the good of our city, and to help, of course, our Democratic Party. We so much love our party, and we're, if whatever we can do for it, we will do it. We thank you from the bottom of our heart. God bless you all. For your and us's recognition.
[applause]
Receiving this, it sounds like receiving a vitamin B, making me more energetic to do more than we are doing. I am so happy to receive this award for my participation. I guarantee you, you're gonna see me all over, going for our county, for our state, for our city. We'd like to do the best. And I want to thank all of those that follow us, to be here with us, and I sure love the people. I love them.
Miguelia Lopez, thank you so much for being there when we needed you.
And I don't know what else to say, but I'm very happy to be here.
Well, we want you to take a lot of vitamins and be strong, stay healthy, because we need your help down here, you know. One of the things that is, is interesting for all of us, and probably almost every person up here is experiencing this, is that our children, we educate them, and they leave, you know, and they don't come back, and they go out there and do good things where they end up, but we want, we would, we want very much for them to come back and do good things here as well. But it's so nice when, when, when good citizens like y'all decide to come back and, and take up where our kids, you know, didn't take up, and come back and fight the good fight over here as well. We really do need your help, because our community is, is still a poor community. There's a lot of difficult times that people experience, and, and there's a lot of work that remains to be done, and with people who has your commitment to community and your religious values and the strength that you bring, and the enormous amount of love that you have, you, you add significantly to the efforts that we all engage in to try to make our rural Granite Valley the best place in the world to live in. So thank you for coming back and fighting, continuing to fight the good fight.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Well, I want to congratulate you for your participation. I know that the minute I met you, when you came back to Harlingen, the enthusiasm was there, your enthusiasm for the Democratic Party, and yesterday I got a phone call and they were asking where they could find you. Now, you have headquarters in Harlingen?
We haven't, we don't have it yet. Whenever we do, and they need us, we will be there. We're committed to be there every day as soon as they need us to.
Very good. Well, I congratulate you for what you've done.
Thank you very much. Okay, Judge, I want to, one comment to the Salas is, the first time I met them was a number of years ago, when I first ran, and when I met them, I thought they were my long-lost uncle and aunt or something, because El Abrazo, and they made me feel like I was part of their family, and I want to personally thank you for, for expressing and extending yourselves to us, you know. And rest assured that, you know, you've got many great years left in your lives. You look very young out there, okay? I don't know how many, how old you are, but I say, you must have gotten married when you were like 12 or 13, because, you know, because 47 years, you know, add up, but...
Forty-nine years. We've been married this year, September 1st, and would have been married 49 years.
Forty-nine years? Okay. But, but, yeah, but, you know, you look great, and, you know, we wish you a lot of health and happiness, and a lot of continued work for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
We also expect to be married, invited to your 50th anniversary, next year.
Next year.
Next year.
I think what we're all saying is, you had a calling. You went to Chicago, you took care of that. You're home now, and we expect you to continue the good deeds here and at home.
And I've always said that a happy couple, and the first time I met you, Mr. and Mrs. Salas, you were, you looked very happy. You were so happy to be helping, you know, and that, that is a big plus for anything you do, because a happy camper will do the best job there is, and I believe that you have, and you continue doing it as long as you're happy. And I really appreciate you, Mr. Salas, crossing from one place, let's say the Civic Center, all the way to the other side, just to say hi to me, you know, that means a lot to me too.
You should have walked us.
No, no. He knew, he knew that I couldn't. No, but I hadn't seen you, you have better eyesight than I did, and you went from one side to the other, so I appreciate that very much.
Their energy level is always high, and that's great. Judge, if I may, there's a young man in the audience that I'd like to introduce, Lino, which is stand, Lino Guerra. I'm glad you're here observing. He'll be, he'll be enrolled at UTB the next semester, and my husband has mentored him since he was in elementary school. So Lino, we're glad to have you here. The other thing I might add, as we're talking about awards and recognitions, I was in Matamoros Saturday, and I know Agroda's not here this morning, but Agroda Elagasa received an award for her humanitarian efforts in Matamoros, which is a very high honor, and so I congratulate her, and, you know, that Agroda helps on both sides of the border, and she was recognized in Matamoros, and I was very proud to see her receive that award.
Yeah, well, she did a lot, especially during the hurricane.
That's right. She's definitely recognized.
She's just done outstanding job with her kids and everything. So, okay. Dare motion to acknowledge President's resolution by Commissioner Moore, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state of mind. I ask both motion carries. Budget amendments, line item, wait a minute. Is there anything else that we need to take out of order? Okay. Budget amendments, line item, transfers and/or salary schedules. Any questions, concerns, comments, complaints, your emotions, your thoughts? The salary schedules attached. Thank you.
The salary schedules attached in reference to the road and bridge are the changes that Mrs. Apurita had requested for last week.
Oh, yes.
For the additional position in construction management, and then the adjustments to the other salaries to cover that salary.
All those, any other, all those in favor signify by state of mind. I ask both motion carries. Claims, any additions to the claims?
Four extra claims presented by all commissioners.
Okay. It was right. All right. Your motion, motion to approve by Commissioner Gott, second by Commissioner, and I ask any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state of mind. I ask both motion carries. Note my attention on warrant number 000152951. I'll execute a, 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 consideration authorization, an authorization to display four silent witnesses with civil rights on the first floor of the courthouse for the month of April to bring awareness of family violence. Hi.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Rosie Mendoza. I'm the victim's assistance coordinator with the district attorney's office. With me, I have Gloria Alcampo, with Friendship of Women. We humbly request your permission to display the silent witnesses, which represent victims that have fallen, who have died at the result of domestic violence. And April is a very important month for us. It's not only Child Abuse Prevention Month, but it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and then there we also have Victims' Rights Week. So we feel that displaying these silent witnesses, four of them, in the courthouse, on the first floor of the courthouse, will certainly be a wonderful venue for the citizens of Cameron County. The DA's office, we serve several victims for protective orders and domestic violence, and we want to help to combat, you know, domestic violence and bring awareness to our community.
The first divorce that I worked on as a lawyer, the lady was murdered by her husband. This is in 19...
Twenty...
Eighty-one. Nineteen eighty-one or nineteen eighty-two. So we, it's right close to home.
Absolutely. And we're seeing an increase in dating violence, teen dating violence, and I know that Friendship of Women has also had some awareness, Pace High School, which we participated, Judge Janet Allen also participated. We had a panel where we did outreach to the teenagers out there in Pace High School, so...
And you'll be glad to know that the first lady of Matamoros is starting a shelter for abused women and children. You've probably heard about that.
Yes. The need is certainly there, absolutely.
And so that's, that's gonna be a big help.
I move, second. Motion to approve by Commissioner Gara, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state of mind. I ask both motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Six, consideration authorization regarding microwave antenna trial by Realplex broadband and improved data and video connection between county facilities.
Good morning. What this is, we were approached in the office, that we were having some problems out at the Rio Hondo office and out at the island with the data transfer and with the, the interoperability, I mean, the, the computer connectivity. So what we did, we were trying to find a new way to do this that would save the county some money. Right now, we're currently using T1 lines to connect everybody, and T1 lines can only carry about, what, 1.49 meg of information? This microwave will carry three. And what it does, it gives us the availability of data, voice, and video, so we can actually start doing video conferencing. What we're trying to do is use this as a test site in the worst areas that we have in the county, as far as getting the information out there to them, which would be Rio Hondo and Andy Bowie Park. If this works, it could open up our horizons to getting rid of the T1 lines and bringing in microwaves, because everything will tie in. This will work well with our, our new system that we're gonna have for the recording, it will work well with the radio system and for the mobile data system. It's all based on building blocks to get us all complete. When you look at your packet, I have in there a 2.6 gigahertz coverage. That was the old one. That was the one that everybody was used to hearing when they heard about microwaves, and it was only a 10-mile radius. Then they went up to a 5.8 gigahertz, which was a little wider radius, but everybody is still commercial. Everybody was allowed on there. The one we're trying to get is a 4.9, which is strictly for law enforcement. Now, what that means is, in Rio Hondo, if you've got constables working in your office, that becomes a law enforcement building, so you can actually use that for the 4.9 gigahertz. It gives us a 30-mile range, and right now, there's nobody on that frequency. We would be the only ones. We would go out and get the licensing on it. If anybody else wants to get on it, they would have to ask us for permission to be on that, and then that way, we would be able to keep that area clean, so that we wouldn't have interference from other commercial entities, so we'd have a wider range. I did bring Othel Brand, he's the owner of Realplex here, so that way, if there's any questions that you have on there, you'd be able to ask him, and he may be able to get you an answer better than I could. And Rudy has been sitting in on some of the meetings with us, so he's aware of it, and if there's any questions that Rudy might be able to answer as far as the connectivity, that's what he's here for also.
Is, I don't know how, how, how is it that, that y'all ended up, I mean, is this gonna be a, a trial where they're gonna do it for free, or what?
Well, there's a, a cost associated with, for the equipment, of $2,400. Then per site, it runs $99 per month, per site for three months.
Have we gone out for proposals on any of it?
This is a sole vendor. If you don't mind, Othel, if you can come on up, that way you can help me explain this. It's a sole vendor. He owns all the towers. Nobody else has the availability to run this down here, except for him, at this, this degree, so...
Judge, it's a, I am, it is a totally in-house solution. The coverage maps you're looking at, that is all owned by and controlled by Realplex and myself. Part of, part of the solution is that by cutting out all the, in order to put a system like this together, you might have to piece together three or four or five different vendors to do this. That inhibits your ability to do the bandwidth that you want and do, and do the video that you want. It is the only, the coverage you see there, I am the only one that vouch for that coverage for, for 4.9, or 5.8 for that matter. Certain T1 costs, it's not real, real difficult to go and look at what you're paying anywhere in the county for T1, and you will not find 99. It is a trial. I've already put the transmitters up for free at my expense. If I try to guarantee the county, if it does not work, you're not happy with it, I'll reimburse the money, take the money back.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I don't have any information to dispute that at all. The only thing I question is, you know, I have a hard, I have a problem with sole sourcing anything, and, you know, even, I mean, we've, I've gotten some calls with respect to how we handle the, the radio system, and, and I don't want to be in the same situation as I was before, as I've had to respond to some of the concerns that have been raised with respect to, you know, us going with just one company without really going out for proposals on that. And I understand why you did it, but, but I, I think that there's people still that are wondering whether or not we gave everybody an opportunity to be able to make proposals on that. And so, you know, I would, before we approve this, I would prefer to have an opportunity to take a look at this and find out what our options are and so forth, and then, and then once I feel that, that I've got the comfort level, then, otherwise, I can't, I can't vote for it or against it, because I don't know, this is the first time that I have understood how it works, and I'd just rather, you know, look at this a little closer. Based upon the concerns that have been raised on the other issue, so, that's my, I would prefer to table this for a week until I get a better chance to take a look at this.
So Tommy, your justification for going this route was that he's the only one that has the towers?
Right, he's the only one that has the towers. We're currently using those towers right now for our radio system. He's the only one that has that many towers in that line of sight that would be able to accommodate what we need, because remember, this is a direct line of sight. That means that the tower from the building has to be looking at the tower to be able to communicate with it. And so his towers are in perfect alignment for the line of sight as to what we need. We, we were given a problem, we're trying to find a solution for it the best that we could. We think that this solution is probably gonna be the way to go. It's going to be able to enhance not only the internet capabilities, but also enhance the capabilities of our radio system as well as our recording system in the future. If it does work, if it does work, it'll probably eliminate T1 lines for the county, which is gonna save us a tremendous amount of money.
Do we know what we're paying for T1 lines right now?
You're paying $220 to $260 per line.
But how many lines do we have?
We have about 12 lines.
About 12 lines?
Per month. That's per month, per month.
Let me ask a question, you know, I mean, how will this, first of all, I want to ask Mike Forbes. Have you at all had a chance to look at this item? No?
As the judge mentioned, it's new to him, it's new to me all.
Okay, so, I mean, that answers my question in regards to, you know, moving forward today with the item, but since you're here, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. In regards, and Rudy too, you know, in regards to more than the just interoperability of the radios, what does this do for computers countywide? Does that mean that, what if a tower goes down?
Well, if a tower goes down, based on, on the plan that we have here, there's some redundancy built into it. So for example, if one of the towers we're pointing to goes down, there's enough coverage towards there, somebody would come out...
towards there, somebody would come out there and re-point the antenna to the next closest tower. And it'll be a temporary downfall until the damaged tower gets rebuilt. And because of the amount of commitments that, that Realplex has with all of its subscribers, that commitment will be for immediate response for repair. In other cases, I believe he has spare parts available. He's guaranteed that will be available. Major repair. I'm sorry. I keep two brand-new towers in my yard at all times. Just laying there, paying for, sitting there, 480-foot towers.
480-foot towers?
480-foot towers.
That's what I was gonna ask. I'm looking at gigantic towers. I, I was thinking maybe a little in-house, a little... Let me ask you, Tom, these radios that we're talking about, where you face the antenna in the right direction, are the ones that we use also during the hurricane seasons, or?
No, no. What we're using right now, Commissioner, are the T1 lines that connects all of the towers together. We're just trying to find a cost that's gonna be less expensive for the county, as well as something that's gonna work for areas that don't have those lines. Like the Andy Bowie Park is out, they don't have a...
Okay, okay, I understand that. Commissioner, I understand your thing about towers. Certainly, I've been in the tower business about over 25 years, certainly here through Beulah. Have never lost a tower. And the oldest tower I had was 16, built in 65, went through Beulah, and all these, this tower system you're looking at, that this represents on this coverage, these are all towers are brand-new, they're all less than five years old. They're all four times, five times the tower of the one that went through Beulah is. If you look at the maps too, you will see that there is redundancy, the rings overlap and overlap and overlap. So we were saying about if one tower would to go, were to go down, it is, it's just a matter of turning it to another tower and going again. The microwave technology's been around for a while. I believe the tower was found in a tent or didn't install about 10 years ago. But the technology back then was still fairly new. Integration was very difficult, and it was very problematic. And so over the 10 years, the technology has matured. And so this is one of the reasons why we wanted to pilot this. Because as we've gone through the broadening, it's been around for a couple of years, and we've discussed some issues and some issues we support, we didn't wanna go in and say, this is the next technology that we're gonna deploy full-blown. We wanted to, we've identified two sites that we know are problematic for any type of communication. And we wanna put it into test. And we give it a test for a good 30 days or so, it stays up and running reliably, then we know that this is something we can move forward with in a, in a planned deployment. But if it doesn't work, we have made no commitment, other than the money we put up front, which is guaranteed to give it back to us if, if the project doesn't work. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to tap into good technology at no cost to the county in reality. Because if it works, then we do pay for it, we move forward. If it doesn't work, we get our money back, and it's, it's in writing.
And we're saving about half on our monthly cost in the future.
Yes. And the, the savings wouldn't be immediate, because we would have to deploy it slowly over the next couple of years, but it's a good plan to move to if the technology works.
Because each site is, is equivalent to two T1 lines. Each site, so you really, if you have two T1 lines, $440 a month, this is 99.
And the microwave is, is a different technology than what we normally see in a radio-based technology where it's broadcasting radio frequency. And the last site, you know, in order for someone to really, really intercept that signal, somebody would have to get directly in between and at the, at the height of these towers. I mean, you're not gonna put a ladder and go up there. You almost have to fly up there and get the right equipment placed, and it's just not gonna happen realistically down here. And then to be able to tap into the law enforcement frequency, 4.9, it's just not available down here, at least not in this time.
Oh, Rudy, to go to his competition, but there's no competition, right? He's the only one. I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and approve this. I think it's a deal, you know?
Tom, I'm impressed with, with what it can do, but I'm a little concerned about the process again, that, that, you know, Mike Forbes wasn't contacted. I mean, we usually get a team together before...
And we did have a team. We, we met downstairs just to see if this was working. We brought Javier in, we brought a lot of people in, just to, to make sure that this was what we were looking at. Now, remember, this is only a test, so if it doesn't work, it's gone. If it does work, then we would have to set up the budgetary process, we'd find out if there's any other bits out there. But it's something so new to us, we had no idea, you know, what, what it could do until we sat there with it.
But then, but if that's the case, it doesn't matter. We wait a week and let Mike take a look at it and find out if everything's all right. And then we, I just wanna make sure that I don't, that we don't get criticized for sole sourcing something that maybe someone else has the ability to, to be involved. I mean, when you do a trial with somebody, you put everybody at a disadvantage that could've competed on, on that. And, and so I, I think just to be fair and to make sure that those other companies that, that are out there, Mike, if they want to be involved in the process, if they get that opportunity, if they can't, because they're not, that kind of a system is not available anywhere else, and then it's an easy one, okay? And I don't think there's a problem with this, with going forward. So, you know, there's a motion that was made by Commissioner Mayan to approve. Is there a second to that motion? I'll amend the motion to table it for next week. Okay, there's a motion to, to amend the motion that's on the floor to table. Is there a second to the motion to table? For next week. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table, signal by stick nine.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm ready to table for one week. And, you know, I mean, I, I know that I visited with you once before in a booth you had set up somewhere, because of what, what your service brings to some of us folks out in the country that don't have the capability to hook up to the internet. And it seems like costs have gone down, you know? Which makes it more affordable, so...
We all have a unique opportunity. I paid for the 2.6 and the other frequencies that are, you have to actually commercially own. I paid millions of dollars for them. FCC has handed y'all this 4.9 on a silver title for free. For free. Takes about two days, takes, you get on the internet and apply it for it, and you get approval in like three, four days. I don't wanna tell you what, how long it took me, a year or better. But it's, it's a great option, at least for the spectrum. It is, it's not being used anywhere in the valley, nor on the, on the south side of the world.
I would like to, to add, Judge, that, that you would make available, Tom, yourself and maybe yourself or somebody with your department to visit with those of us that would like to learn a little bit more, besides visiting with Mike Forbes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if you need more time, let us know, Mike. But I think that we can resolve this relatively quick and just, you know...
Short term.
Short term and come back and just do it, to make sure nobody raises any issues on that. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Eight, seven, consideration approval of inova agreement to the city of Brownlow, Texas and the county of Cameron, Texas for Tools 2006 BYRNE Justice Assistance Grant JAG. JAG.
JAG.
This year, Judge, the city and the county will get $71,612 in justice assistance money to be split by both entities. The Commissioners Court previously authorized the judge in Ojos's office to meet with the city of Brownsville to discuss the split of funds. And, and the city and, and the county at that meeting agreed to a split where the county would get $37,306, and, and the city would get $34,306. And, and that's what's on the table as far as this agreement. It'll be approved by us this week, and then next week by the city of Brownsville. Once, once that money is split up, we'll have a public hearing where entities, law enforcement entities from the county that have requested funds will be able to make a presentation. After that, the court will decide how, how to use those monies.
Well, I have a public hearing on number eight. Is that the same one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same.
This, this one will split the money up before you get to the hearing.
I move that we approve the second.
Motion by Commissioner, second motion, we're in for a discussion. All those in favor, signal by stick nine. Fourth motion carries. Eight, public hearing to, to discuss grant funding for the 2006 Justice Assistance Grant and consider possible use of the funds. Motion to go into...
So move.
The miles here by Commissioner Mayan, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by stick nine.
Aye.
Fourth motion carries for non-public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, in your backup for this item, you received a detailed packet on the request that was submitted. What we're passing out right now is a summary of those requests, and you can browse through them a little bit quicker. We, we received requests as of our agenda deadline from the auto theft unit, from the tax office, the DA's office, district clerk, JP 2-1, the juvenile probation department, precinct two constable's office, precinct four constable's office, and the sheriff's department. Again, we have $37,306 available. The total requests, the total of all requests is for $124,621.
We're just a tad short, aren't we?
How much is it again? 36,000?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, 306. That's what we have available. Okay, so we're in a public hearing. Does anybody wanna come in and testify?
Good morning.
Good morning.
County Judge, and the Commissioners, I'm one of them that I'm requesting some monies, and I'll be going before the committee that y'all be having. As a matter of fact, I was in the committee last year ago on that. I'm no longer in that committee right now. But I'm requesting two desktop and a notebook. But I'll settle for two. My, my notebook, which I don't have a computer myself personally, and I have been requesting for one for a long time, since I started around, since I started office last year. And we are in need, because we have my night court. And that notebook would really help a lot on my night court, because I can take it downstairs to the central bureau.
You mean the laptop?
The, and the laptop, of course, I need one in the office also. So I'm asking for a laptop and a notebook. I was asking for three, but like I said, and I heard how much money you all have, but I'm really in a need of that, and that'll help a lot process all those truancy delinquent rates that we have, also the collections of the court costs and the fines. And that's what I'm asking for, for a notebook and a, and a laptop for my office. But the notebook is really in need.
Let me ask Frank before we...
And also those CDLs license that I've been collecting, that will help a lot. I don't have one, and I was supposed to get one, I never got one.
Frank, all the requests that we have before us, the total's $124,000, are all of those items eligible under this? Okay, so we don't have to worry about the eligibility. Thank you.
So, right now, the cost that I have for those three items was $7,690. But like I said, I'm willing to settle for two only.
Two, one, one desktop computer, one laptop?
Yes. That's a notebook, which they call it a laptop.
So that's the two that are listed here?
Yeah, I have three, but I'm willing to do away with one of them. Just, just give me a regular desktop computer and a, and a notebook.
Oh, I see.
I was asking for three, but this regard, the third one, I'll settle for that.
You're asking for two desktop computers? That's why you're saying three?
Just, just one desktop and one notebook.
Fifty-four, forty-five instead of the seven, six ninety.
Right. Talking about fifty-five thousand something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable Lopez, do you have? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Russell.
Good morning. Renee Garst with the Cameron County DA's office. We have a request in there as all, as well. It's for an investigator for Drug Task Force for the DEA and the FBI. That'll help pay his salary for that. That way, we'd be able to be in agreement or share information with the Drug Task Force or the DEA or the FBI, and the, the Cameron County DA's office will know what's going on with those state agencies and those federal agencies. We are kind of short of funds for investigators, so any, any amount will help us get that position filled.
What would happen to that position after this grant runs? It would just be absorbed into the forfeiture fund, or?
Yeah, that would, that, we'd try to keep funding it through grants and stuff like that, but, you know, through the available monies, but it's more important that we get that so that we can start it up and, and keep it going, that they're in, in those organizations.
That position is one that can be funded by forfeiture fund?
It is.
And how much money do you have available?
How much money?
For that position?
Well, the salary is normally $43,000. We're asking for the 37,306 to help...
Thirty-four.
Thirty, thirty-four?
Thirty-four.
Yeah, 34,306 to help us out with that. And then we'd, we'd go into the forfeiture funds and help pay the difference to, to keep that. It, it is the sharing of information that's important.
Okay, well, this, it's, it's got listed here, actual salary is $51,000.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's with the benefits and the taxes and social security and stuff like that.
That's your total?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
County Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting $1,100, just a little over, for an inkless fingerprint system and some flashlights. Unfortunately, my department's so small that I can't even afford some flashlights, but if it makes it easier, you, I mean, if you just approve my flashlights, I can hold off on the, on the fingerprint system.
But what you're asking with the flashlight, now you're gonna identify me if you don't have a fingerprint.
Definitely.
Well, he has, he has an ink system now.
No. But if you approve the 1,100, that'll still leave about $34,000 for everybody else, so we'll be all right.
You're awfully generous, Robert.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's see.
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna make a...
Yeah.
There's somebody else that must have...
Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Our program will enhance our current collections program. As you know, the Office of Court Administration's in charge of, I guess, implementing Senate Bill 1863, which requires that Cameron County be compliant by April. What that requires is that we start collecting from inmates who are on probation. What, what we're requesting will kind of allow us to also collect for TDC inmates, people who are put on parole, and also implement that collections program into our civil section. Part of, part of what we're asking for is collections and receiving modules for our current collections program. What this will allow is we'll allow the computer center to go ahead and modify our current criminal system to collect for civil and to collect for criminal. What I mean for civil will be any of the fines or contempt fees that are associated with Attorney General's office, or any of the motions that are filed by a DA's office where the respondent is being brought back on a motion for contempt. We'll go ahead and start collecting on that, on those monies. Now, we're asking for equipment which includes computers, printers, and software modification. Do you have any questions?
Is, you wouldn't have to have all of them, right?
No, we can go ahead and...
I mean, you're requesting all, but one would help.
Uh, two, at least, who's that?
Your answer should be whatever you will give us.
The software modifications?
Yes.
If it's one, it's gonna cost the same, whether it's six, right?
Yeah, it's the same thing. No, it's just the, an estimate that we got from the computer center. Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here from the auto theft unit?
Okay. The item we're requesting is the bin etching equipment. What it does is it creates, it actually etches the bin on the windows of each, each of the windows of the vehicle.
That's okay.
This was a report that actually came out on Saturday, in Good Morning America. Vehicles are stolen, the vehicles are taken apart. Many times, the, the doors and other items don't have the bins on them. What this equipment does, it'll allow our, our task force as part of our public awareness programs to do the bin etching. What that does is it permanently etches the bin on each of the vehicle windows. So if that car is stolen and taken apart, they can identify the, the doors, the windows. It makes it harder for somebody to take apart a vehicle and get rid of it. Our task force has actually used a bin on a window to, to identify the vehicle and, and assist in the recovery. And this, I mean, we've asked for this equipment through the county equipment list, and it's a one-time purchase.
Okay, let me make a recommendation and see if we can talk about it, and we'll start off that way.
Are you gonna close the public hearing?
Well, we're gonna talk about it, and then we'll, I wanna throw this out, and then this is part of the public hearing, and then we'll come back and do one way or the other where we wanna go. The DA's office has been coming to us all the time, and we always tell them no, and we always tell them no, and we always tell them no, and they're just really, really in a difficult situation. So I would propose that we, in that slot, we allocate twenty-five thousand dollars, not to thirty-four, let him split fifty-fifty, the full-time investigator slot. So twenty-five thousand, and then give Judge Salazar and one desktop computer, one laptop Give Robert Lopez his request, and then Constable Precinct Two, Constable Alvaro Gómez, give him two Dell laptops, two license fees for laptops, and two Novatel wireless six-twenty cards. And I think that totals up to right around, so far, a little bit below the thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and six number. Am I wrong?
Thirty, I think we have thirty-four.
No.
Apollo thirty-seven, some of that was for administration, the community.
Yeah.
Judge, can you repeat? Do you have a break, Thomas?
Mike, it's twenty-five thousand for the DA, three thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for one computer for Judge Salazar, three thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for one computer, three thousand, two hundred dollars for one laptop computer, I think that's what she requested, on Constable Precinct Two, Alvaro Gómez, two Dell laptops, two license fees, and two Novatel wireless six-twenty cards, which is, each laptop computer's one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine, so twice that, which would be thirty-four, thirty-five, forty, somewhere around there. And then two license fees, that's seven hundred and twenty, and two Novatel wireless six-twenty cards, that would be two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two. And then you add to that the one thousand, one hundred and nineteen ninety-nine from Constable Robert Lopez. What does that total up to?
I figure thirteen thousand, nine hundred and four, plus the twenty-five. I don't have that under here.
That's not right.
That's thirty-eight.
No.
Okay. We're right around the thirty-seven. Add it up again, twenty-five thousand.
I thought we were gonna have a public hearing. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. And I'm glad you divided that pie, but I was hoping that you included there too, okay? Well, that, and we had the list there, and we thought we were gonna meet with Frank here and probably just go over that before we came out here to this public hearing. Nevertheless, and we did give one of these to everybody, and I don't have the individual that prepared, but I would like to, if nothing else, a couple of bicycles. The bicycles are used for community policing. The bicycles, what I have out here when the people go out here and do crime stop, precinct crime stop. Two bicycles, seven thousand, five hundred.
But how much are the bicycles?
They run about three thousand dollars each.
Each?
So you're asking for two?
For two.
I look at the DA's request, and since that can be funded through forfeiture funds, I think we need to be using these funds for some of the other departments that don't have the ability to be funded by forfeiture funds. Like the district clerk being able to collect some money, stuff like that.
Well, except that on the district clerk thing, and the reason I include it, where's the district clerk? We're putting together a budget for that department, and we're gonna figure out what's gonna be generated in terms of additional revenues as a result of that program. And we intend to fund what you're requesting, but we're gonna fund it out of the revenues that are generated there, so that's why we, when you came up here, I wasn't paying attention to you because we'd already decided to do that. You're gonna get what you want, but it's gonna be out of the revenues that come out of your operations there, and that's why I didn't do that. But let me just tell you, with respect to the DA's office, John, is that they are using enormous amount of their forfeiture funds right now to fund operations, and it's dwindling significantly, and it's going down to a point where he's gonna start running out of that real soon, and so we're trying to move away from that. I've, you know, we didn't fund any of his slots in the budget that he requested, not one, last fiscal year. And, you know, I've been working with him and the auditor's office to try to come up with some additional revenues that we might be able to come up with, but up to now, we haven't done that, and, you know, I just hate to tell him no again. I mean, we've just been saying no, and no, and no, and no, and no, and that. We rarely say no to the sheriff, though. Rarely, 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 rarely say no to the sheriff. And that's why I skipped it over to sheriff, because the requests that were being made, there was a lot of people that had not gotten anything lately, and, you know, we have funded most of your requests as they come through, and then nobody said anything, so.
Well, we produce-
We're still in the public hearing process, I think that I like to listen to you, but-
Well, because we needed it, we had it before, but, you know, those bicycles, I mean, they're worn out, and I don't have anybody out there, and it's great because it cuts down on the crime. It's a personal contact with the public. People like it, I think it helps on the long run. We work side by side also with the Border Patrol, which in essence helps everybody, and that keeps us in contact with other law enforcement agencies, not only Border Patrol, but the National PD, and also the Harlem Chain PD, and especially when they do have sections or, not sections, but activities like the charro days, we also use the bicycles precisely. And I keep those people over there at the island during the spring break and during the Easter holidays. So it's easier for us to move in and out of traffic, and rather than to wait an hour or two to cross the causeway. So that's why we have the bicycles, and they come in very handy for us, they work very productive.
Sheriff, are you asking for these bicycles to replace some bicycles you have, or to add to your?
No, I'm asking to replace. I have four, but two of them are no good at all, so I can't use them at all. They become a liability, and they cost too much. Well, I cannot even repair them. Not to add, but to replace.
Pardon?
Not to add, but to replace.
To replace, because that's an important issue.
That'll get you back up to the four you normally-
Originally had.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. They can't be fixed, they're beyond repair.
They're beyond repair, Commissioner. You can't repair those bicycles because they become also a liability, okay? And if you're gonna be fixing them, it's very costly also. So we're just gonna have to just set them aside.
Okay, I'm calculating. I have one, well, is somebody here from Gomez's office? I'd like to hear from them, you know, just to see.
Good morning, County Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sergeant Murillo, I'm here on behalf of Constable Gomez. We're asking for four Doppler radar units and three laptops. We appreciate the proposal that the county judge made, and I just wanna add to that, that if we were awarded at least one of the four that we were requesting, we would like to impact the statistics that were provided to you by the Texas Department of Public Safety. That's two thousand and three statistics. I don't know if you all have what I have in front of me. According to the, I'd just like to go over it briefly. It says, according to the Texas Department of Public Safety, they reported three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four persons were injured in motor vehicle traffic crashes. There were about a thousand and fifty-five people killed in alcohol-related motor crashes, and two hundred and twenty-nine motorcycles were killed. And most of the time, if we had those Doppler radar units available to us, you know, we could perhaps intercept those people and prevent, you know, motor vehicle crashes or fatalities, or hopefully impact these statistics in the lower rural Granti Valley. Our precinct, I believe, is one of the ones that has the largest population in Cameron County, since we serve-
Radar would actually be used for speed control.
Yes, sir.
How about the laptops?
The laptops, sir, we were wanting to use for out in the field. We don't, currently, we don't have any laptops in our units.
Does any constable have laptops in their units?
I'm not aware of that.
I don't think so. I don't think they have in the office, much less in their unit.
Well, you know, thankfully, we're getting up to speed because we were, we have one that was operational at our main office, and we had three or four dinosaur computers in our substation, which we share with the sheriff's office, but we're getting up to speed to that, and we thank the people from the computer center. The only thing is that at the substation that is located in Cameron Park, we don't have internet access at this time. We're still working on that. And if we had that laptop, which we have an officer out there, detective, assigned to that office, if we had a laptop, he would have access to the internet, he would have access to the ecosystem of reflections. We also recently got the opportunity to try the Leeds Online program, which was approved by you all, and that is geared more towards burglaries and thefts of recovery property for the citizens of Cameron County.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the juvenile probation?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask, is that for additional probation aids, or?
Grace, you can ask her. We're requesting four probation officer aids that will help us in the surveillance process, doing curfew checks and so forth. As the chief stated, if we not approve four, we'll take two. Anything you can give us. Anything to assist us, because we are, like I said, our caseload is going up, and we do need help, especially at night, for surveillance checks.
Okay, thank you. Let me throw out something else.
Is anybody out there here requesting funds? Because we're in the public hearing process, right?
Right.
Is there anybody else out there that is, that's not on here? No. Okay. Is Tom Husins or Rudy Still, I don't see either one of them. I was going to pursue the issue of, could these laptops, as opposed to going to Novatel Wireless, could they be used if we go into the RioPlex program as part of one of the systems that we would already be paying for, and cut out the three thousand, five hundred dollars a year for two?
I mean, that's a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars.
It's a hundred dollars a month to upgrade a wireless laptop.
And I'm thinking they may be able to tag on to one of the offices we have, if we go into that program.
Yeah, I think that's, the problem would be is that you're paying the recurring fee for the other setup versus what you're paying for the wireless. The issue that he was talking about at the law enforcement substation was that the previous white internet connection was hooked up through a grant, was paying for that connectivity, and so you'd have to essentially install all that new equipment that you'd be doing there to provide that, so I don't know that you'd actually gain an advantage by asking them to include this in that trial.
Well, if we didn't have to contract with Novatel, we'd be gaining that much advantage.
Thirty-five hundred bucks right there, we're getting all that other equipment for twenty-four hundred?
It's true, but you're also, don't forget the ninety-nine dollar a month site.
Well, that's what I'm asking, can this be included into one of the offices where we're going to be paying ninety-nine?
I think it could, but you'd be setting up a trial system that would only be in place for, I think, thirty days versus the full year as to whether or not it's gonna go forward.
We're not setting up a trial system.
Well, but at the end of the-
I'm looking for information, Remy, right now.
At the end of the day, though, the way I remember that this has worked in the past is that when we don't make expenditures the way we had originally agreed to make them, then we come back and we amend the budget and we do other things with them, right?
Yes.
So why don't we do this, okay? Let me go back to my original proposal and modify it a little bit.
So we're gonna go into item number nine?
No, let's, we'll just talk about it.
It's in my doctora.
Okay. We can, what do you want to do?
I don't know, I think we had a closer hearing, if nobody else is here to tell us about-
All right, do you have a motion to close?
Some of-
Second. Motion by Commissioner Palma, second by Commissioner Vasquez, and for the discussion, all of the present, and I stand by. Okay. Let me see if I calculated this right. So we would go, my recommendation then now was, after this discussion, because that was a preliminary recommendation.
First draft, let's see how many drafts we go through.
Two thousand, first draft, two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for one desktop computer for Linda Salazar, three thousand, two hundred dollars for one laptop computer for Linda Salazar. And I'm assuming that you'd rather have the laptops, Constable, than substitute a laptop for a radar unit?
Yes, sir. Hopefully-
Because we can't give everybody everything in their request, and so my recommendation then would be two Dell laptops, three license fees for laptop, I'm sorry, two license fees for laptops, two Novatel wireless six-twenty cards for twenty-four months. That's a total of six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. The Stinger flashlights and identical inkless fingerprint system for a total of one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then the bicycles that the sheriff requested, seventy-five hundred dollars. That's a total of twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the balance would go to the district attorney's office for a full-time investigator, towards a full-time investigator, with the understanding that if there's any savings that are incurred as a result of this thing that Tom was proposing, and we go forward on that, all the savings go to the DA's office.
What is the total again? Twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, which gives the DA's office somewhere short of seventeen thousand dollars, plus whatever savings we save on the wireless component that is being proposed through Tom's proposal.
Let's hurry up before we revise it again, no?
And if there's any savings on the bicycles or anything like that, any savings on any of the purchases, then would go to the DA's office. The balance would go towards that full-time investigator.
That sounds fair.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
I just think that, you know, we should be concerned more with radar units than we are with wireless laptops or the constable's office. I think that traffic control, you know, at least in the ones that I'm associated with in my precinct, is much more important than wireless communication. Lots of problems with speeders.
I mean, there's speeders everywhere, you turn on the news every day, all you do is hear that speed zapper character, you know? But, I mean, I asked him which he wanted to pick, I mean-
Yeah, but I'm asking if we can throw two radar units in there.
Radar units in there, I think that radar units, speed control and safety of the pedestrians and children around school areas, you know, the constables in Precinct Three do a great job with minimal equipment in Port Isabels and all these areas, you know? If they had Doppler radars, I think that, you know, it would be fantastic, you know? It'd be great.
The cost of this radar unit is no more than one speed hub.
Yeah.
And we can certainly do a lot more with-
So two radar units would be four hundred bucks?
No, they're about nine twenty-nine each.
Oh, nine twenty-nine each. And that's two hundred, I mean, if we do two, that's two thousand dollars, that comes off your share.
You know, I would have, I wouldn't have too much of a problem-
I was pointing over there, but you moved out of the way.
I mean, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd have a problem, Judge, if we made the laptops one, the license fees one, and the card one, and put the rest in radar units. I would-
With that saving, I need to ask you what you want.
We would settle for two radars and one laptop.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Okay, you'd rather have that then?
Yes, sir.
Is that better for you? Okay, well, let me get to the numbers as close as I can right here. Let me figure it out. So it would be one, seven, six, nine, plus three, sixty, plus one, one, eight, one, that's three thousand, and three radar units, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then that works out, that gives you a little bit more money for the DA's office, huh?
Three or two?
Huh?
Three.
He said two to begin with.
Huh? You said two or three radar units?
Table one.
Okay, why? Huh?
Three.
Three?
Okay. Twenty-seven, eighty-seven.
Twenty-seven, eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, eighty-seven.
Okay, so that gives you another five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, that's-
He wants us to keep going, right?
Okay, then here's the- Okay, here's, then here's the proposal.
Okay, let's go over it again.
Bring us a more ergonomic. We need more ergonomic calculators, Remy.
It's falling apart.
Let me go through the proposal one more time. Let me go, let me go through the proposal one more time.
Can we have calculators for permission?
Start at the top, start at the top.
We need to get a calculator for each one of us up here, you know? So it's one desktop, desktop, desktop computer for Judge Salazar, $2,245. One laptop computer at 3,200. Three Doppler radar units for Precinct Two. One Dell laptop. The three radar units are 929 each. One Dell laptop is 1,769. One license fee for laptop is 360. And one Novatel wireless 620 card is 1,181, or a total of 6,097. Constable Lopez got 1,100, we're proposing 1,199 for the Stinger flashlights and identical inkless fingerprint system. And then 7,500 for the two bicycles for the sheriff department. It's two bicycles, up to 1,000, huh?
Two bicycles.
Up to 7,500, total budget on that. And the balance goes to the DA's office for the investigators.
Thank you, sir.
Are we all right, do you hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind. Both motion carries. Would that just be easy?
I just wanna make one comment, then. We spend more time spending the least amount of money than we do spend in the pink box, you know?
It's hard, it's a point for them.
Yeah, I mean, those are the things that. Robert, I'm sure you're coming in with a request, you know, that you need.
Next time, Robert, you need to come in a little bit higher.
That's what I was gonna tell you, Robert. Robert was real honest and real fair and.
Robert is just good to see.
No, no, you know, and Robert, you're from the barrio like me, right? Just a little bit, la masia.
Okay, so that's the motion in the second on number nine, right?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, we already voted, right? Consent items, items 10 through 25 and travel item 26. Do you hear any questions, concerns, comments, complaints?
So moved.
Motion to a full.
Second.
Benavides, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
All the both, motion carries. Motion to go on executive session. Motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind. Aye. Both motion carries, we're now on executive session. Assume to be the C.A. government, section 5, 51.071, A and B, and 2, 51.072, 551.072, 551.071, A and 2, 551.0.
I didn't know you moved.
Yeah?
I didn't know you moved.
I'm gonna meet you out at Frank's, I think.
Oh, really? Commissioner Tamara, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
All the both, motion carries, on item 28, A and B, do you hear a motion at the table?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tamara, second by Commissioner.
And also C, A, B, and C.
A, B, and C are, the motion at the table by Commissioner Tamara, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries, 28B, possible action on deliberation regarding seller real property owned by Cameron County at the Gateway Bridge, motion to acknowledge report of pizza bulldog. Any further discussion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamara, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item number 28E, possible action on preferable commission court legal counsel concerning Vicenta Cantú, Felix Arnaño, Steve Weaver, and Diamantina Álvarez, Cameron County, and Tony Zagueta Jr. Civil action number B, 03096, in the United States District Court, for the, for discussion on the status of the case unsettled, motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner.
No, he just wants to acknowledge report.
Section by Commissioner Tamara, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries. 28EF, possible action on preferable commission court legal counsel concerning discussion of provisions of medical care for jailed inmates, motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Tamara, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
All the both, motion carries. 28G, possible action on preferable commission court legal counsel concerning issues presented regarding the Delmar Heights Bio-Properties, motion to acknowledge report of.
And to approve 4,500?
4,500. Block four, lot three.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner.
I did.
Second.
Garcia, any, second by Commissioner Tamara, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind. All the both, motion carries. Item 28H, possible action on preferable commission court legal counsel concerning concession, lease term between Cameron County and affiliated management systems. Motion, 28H, that was 28H, motion to acknowledge report of Park Director and to proceed along the line discussing executive session.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamara, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries. 28I, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning concession, lease between Cameron County and Costa Rica Food and Spirits and Agua.
Move to acknowledge report from Javier.
See, motion to.
Acknowledge. Javier.
Report by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
All the both, motion carries. 28J, possible action on preferable commission court legal counsel concerning Cervantes versus Cameron County in the 404th District Court, cause number 2,5094954G, from mediation authority, motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
And you go to mediation.
Second. And, and, and see mediation authority as stated in the executive session. Motion by who?
Please, my second.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by state of the mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.